Today is Tuesday, November 12th, 2018, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hillman, there were some items in the table file.
Yes, this evening's table file, we had a couple of items. We had an additional request under discussion and reports to hire additional general education, educational assistant, FTE at Bridgewater. We also had a gift agreement. There's an appointment, some increase, decrease, and change in assignment, a leave of absence, and a co-curricular overnight trip for 2019-20.
Okay, excellent. We'll add these two items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented, moved by Jeff? Is there a second? Second by Alloz and Bayes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? While she carries. We have an approved agenda. We now have an opportunity for residents, parents, employees, or employees of the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we'll move on with announcements and references. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, I have two announcements this evening. Number one, we want to let you know that tomorrow, Wednesday, November 13th, is National Signing Day, and that's for student athletes who are signing with the respective colleges for next year. We want to congratulate three Northfield High School student athletes. Brown and Timberly is a volleyball player, and she's going to play at Northern Colorado. Drew Woodley, wrestling, going to Iowa State. And Ella Kelm, a diver, attending Minnesota State University Mankato. So we want to congratulate these students who are participating in the National Signing Day Ceremony tomorrow afternoon. And we also want to share with you that the Greenville Park Community School Report to the community was completed this month. The report details the results of the fifth year of the community school programming at Greenville Park. The report is in the process of being shared with Greenville Park families and all families with preschool children living in the Greenville Park attendance boundaries, community partners, and also local real estate agents. And we want to thank everyone who assisted with this report's compilation. Those are your announcements for this evening, November 12th.
Excellent, thank you. Is there anything anyone would like to add? We will move on for our first item for a report, and we welcome Darryl Cumming from the Area Learning Center to give us a building update. It's a new thing that we will begin. Thank you to Dr. Iverson for her idea to have administrators from our buildings come back, parkway through the year, and make some updates. And I just think it's an excellent way for us to hear about the things happening, and we always love having administrators on our floor. We think so, and we look forward to it.
Excellent, thank you. I'll jump right in. Hopefully you can hear me at the party going on in the background. So the ALC building update, the things that are going well, the top bullet there is the goal, one of the goals that we have from the school improvement plan. So the goal is to have 60% of ALC students reach a consistent attendance of 90%, as measured by the average of grading periods. As you can see by the first two bullets there, we've had two grading periods already this school year. So our grading periods are roughly about a month. So we had one in September, one in October. We just started the third one, November 5th. So of the first two that are completed, our goal was 60% of students. The first one, we were at 78% of students, and the second grading period, we're at 70% of students. And so both grading periods that we've completed so far, we exceeded our goal. And the chart at the bottom, see if I get the right laser pointer, this just shows what I did is I took the blue bar is last year's attendance, and that kind of shows you why we chose the goal that we did, because we wouldn't have made it any of the grading periods last year. We got close a few of them, but didn't quite make it any of them. And so far, the first two of this year, you can see in purple, we made it by quite a bit. So right now, what we're doing is we're monitoring this goal. We're going to come back around and see if we want to adjust that goal at all for the rest of the year, now that we've had a couple grading periods, or if we want to keep this goal the same for this school year. Some of the things that we attribute this attendance rate to, the activities and field trips that we've had have been very successful in building community, and students have reported that they really enjoyed the atmosphere of the ALC and coming to school every day. The other thing too, that was, we have an SCI survey is what it's called. It's a Student Engagement Instrument, and it was, it's from the Alliance for Promise Fellows Have to Do This. We don't have a promise fellow this year, but we still are using that survey to measure our social, emotional, learning goals and activities. And so one of the questions, there's 34 questions involved in that survey. I just pulled one of them, just to give you an idea. Pretty positive results with teachers, students to teachers' interactions. So almost 98% of students say teachers care about students, and I just included that pie chart down here of what that actually broke down. Strongly agree, and just one disagreed of the students that we surveyed. So right now, there's a very strong positive feeling of the ALC, which is growing. I was just commenting to Greg that normally we reach the stride, we get into the groove in September sometime. We're just getting to it now with November because of kind of the next slide which I'll go into, but we're getting there and feeling that positive momentum building. So I just put in some of the pictures of some of the things that we've done so far this year, which I'll get into the next one. So some of the problems that we're trying to solve, as you have heard before, earlier this year, we have had unprecedented growth. So we're normally 50 or 60 students, we're at 91. So quite a few more students than what we typically have. We do have that large EL population growth from 7% to about 41%. The two main things that have helped tremendously, and I would like to thank the board again, the increase in FTE that we had, we were able to offer two new classes, which helped spread that, those numbers out a little bit, which helped tremendously. And also, we increased our EL FTE. We didn't increase the district EL FTE, but we just had some reallocation, which was fantastic, and thank you for Nancy and Bridgewater for accommodating with that. It's been very, very helpful. We offered this grading period that just started, a new EL class, and we also have some push-in EL services too, that we haven't had before at the ALC. So those are building some really strong momentum. We have some students that are really excited and interested in all three of these classes that we started that were new to the ALC. So some of those things that we have done to build that positive momentum is the, one of our new, with our changing demographic students, is we wanted to highlight appreciation for cultures. So we have quite a few different cultures represented at the ALC, and so we wanted to highlight those, so students had an appreciation for others' cultures and also their own that they may not even be aware of. And so what we started is we started a monthly community culture meal. And so the first one was a Mediterranean meal that we had, kind of the Southern Europe kind of style, where we had fettuccine alfredo and some other things. The second one was Middle East, and so we just had that a couple weeks ago, where we had the students, the first one, the staff really planned and kind of put that together to say, here's what it will look like, here's kind of what we're going for. The second one, the Middle East, we had little subcommittees of students that planned what dishes they wanted to have, what things they thought were important for that culture, and then they helped cook those meals or cook those dishes as well. And then we, at the end of the day, had a little time where everyone sampled the dishes from the Middle Eastern culture. And so that was our second one. We have one planned out for every month of the school year, highlighting different cultures or regions of the world. The other thing that we've done too is field trips. So we have our annual Fall Frollick, which is kind of a picnic, but it's not a meal. We just have some little snacks and stuff and activities. So we had some students playing soccer in the park. We had beanbag toss, we had basketball game going on, all kinds of stuff at the park right next to the ALC there. We also went on a Minnehaha Falls scavenger hunt. That was the previous slide where you saw that wonderful picture, which is really fun for the students just to get out, have some fun, build some community. They got to choose groups, that they were walking around Minnehaha Falls Park with a scavenger hunt, and then we had some prizes for different student groups. So that was really fun. We did, tied to a Renaissance and Reformation literature class, we went on a Renaissance Festival field trip, and so they experienced that as well. And then a week from today, we are going to a ropes course. So we're going to do the ropes course at Fort Stelling, and one week from today, again, just to build that community and continue with that positive momentum that's building. So this other picture here is one of our meals that we had, where the students, what we do is we set up in our little cafeteria, students go through the line, and then we set up the classroom, kind of buffet style or restaurant style, if you will. The Middle Eastern one, we had a teacher from the high school here that had some artifacts from Kuwait, and so we put those around the room and set the room up, kind of like a cultural gallery, if you will, with the food and the artifacts. So it was a pretty cool experience. And so as we go and do this more, we're trying to get more and more student voice and student involvement in that process too, just so that they can put their stamp on it as well. So with that, are there any questions?
Excellent, thank you, Darryl. Questions, comments, board members have? Come.
So with the extra 40 students, does the cohesiveness for the, does it feel different having more students, and do they, if you have more students, maybe, do they form groups better than if they, if you have less students?
Yes and no. So it does definitely feel different. The beginning of the year in September, and even into October, I had a lot of conversations, especially from our previous ALC students that were there before, with the change, they just felt, this is, this is a lot, this is a lot to get used to. And so we did a lot of activities to help calm that down or make that feel a little more comfortable. So doing these group activities, I think, helped. So they got to know each other a little more quicker than if we just naturally let them kind of throughout the year. And so we put them into a lot of community building activity type things to help build that. And they do have groups, especially the beginning of the year, they were in their friend groups and people that they knew kind of groups. But as we've gone through and done more of these purposeful activities, it's starting to see in the hallway where people are talking with people that they haven't talked to before, making connections that they wouldn't have otherwise. So that is, that's why I say that getting into the groove, which is normally September, is pushed now into November, just because all that getting used to for the students and for the staff was quite a new endeavor, because we almost doubled, and that definitely was felt by a lot of people. And having some of those resources that I pointed out did help alleviate some of that. As soon as we helped spread out some of the students, it was almost immediate that those conversations of students saying, this is, this is too much, this is like big, that went away pretty quick once I was able to have a couple more sections to spread that, spread that out a little bit.
Excellent. Amy?
I have two questions. The first is just a general one. I'm curious sort of the breakdown in girls and boys. And then the second question is for all of the English language learners that are coming in, I'm wondering what level they are in their learning English.
Yep.
You know, are they really basic, or are they, just if you could talk about that?
So the breakdown, boys versus girls, is historically really close to 50/50. Sometimes it's 60/40 one way and 60/40 the other way, but it's, the average is really close to 50/50, boys and girls, so there's not really any trend one way or the other. As far as the EL students, we do have the WEDA score, in case you're unfamiliar with. It's a score that kind of measures what you're referring to, and so we've been, it's another new process that we're developing, because with this huge number of students, we haven't had to deal with that, going through the screening process and all those test scores and all that. So hope has helped tremendously with that. And so we've been able to get those together, and Zach Besky, our cultural liaison, has also helped tremendously with gathering as much information as we can, to not only tell students, but also inform the students of, here's where you're at, here's the plan, here's the support that we have in place. So we do have a fair amount of, on this WEDA score, it's one to five. Five is where you're exited out. One is kind of new to country kind of score. We're right around, we have a fair number that are in the one to, 1.5 to 2.5 range, and then we have some that are in the three roughly. And so there are a chunk that are in that lower end of the spectrum, and that's why we started that EL class, to help support those students. And so then Inger Hansen, who's the EL student, our teacher at the ALC, is helping not only with the class, but also pushing to the, some of the other, some of the, she had a fantastic strategy where when she got there, she interviewed as many students as she could, and just talked with the students to get to know them. And along that process, asked, what level of support would you like? Where are you at? What's your comfort level? And had some fantastic insight into the responsiveness of the students too. And so she's helped through that. She learned that science and social studies were the two main areas that the students were really looking for extra help with. And so she has the EL class, and then she's pushing into the science and social studies classrooms to help in those, because that's where students self-identify the area that they need additional help in. And so that's how we've been going this grading period, the November grading period. And we're going to, we've already talked about plans for the future of how that may change, or how we're going to adapt it to best the students where they're at.
And for those of you keeping score at home, WEDA stands for World Class Instructional Design and Assessment, and it's a consortium of states that came together to put together some high standards, some equitable opportunities, and a way to assess English language learners' skill level. So that's what it stands for, because I know sometimes we get into acronym heaven, and we want to, we'll have to update the, our acronym list with that one.
Yes, and that, we've had a lot of conversations that are really good conversations about that too, because we've found some students in their past at some point didn't necessarily take the test as seriously as they could, and so then they just kind of just wanted to get through it, and so the scores are not necessarily reflective of where they're at. And so that's what we're trying to do also with that interview process, to get some of those bugs worked through with students to say, you know, this is in your benefit if you can take this seriously, work, and then it helps us to help you of identifying where exactly things are. So yeah, there's, there's a tremendous amount of learning curves this year in all kinds of different areas.
Helen?
So I'm curious in terms of the learning curves. You've really made use of the PLC for professional development and instructional staff, and it would seem like the changing demographics and almost doubling in size that that might, besides just having support for FTE, it's more than that. So I didn't know if that was influencing what the PLCs were doing this year, or shifted some focus in professional development?
Yep, so yes and yes. So our PLC, we've had a, that SCI survey that I mentioned before down here, we've historically had a really strong data supporting the students and teachers relationship. It's very positive. The peer-to-peer relationship is a little lower. It's normally at like about 80 to 85% of agree statements. So there's some room for growth there. And so this year, our PLC, that's what we took on. It's not new to this year, but it's been a reoccurring theme of that peer-to-peer, things of just feeling respected when, what you have to say, or other students care about me, those kinds of questions. And so that's what we're doing through our PLC, is to try and work on that peer-to-peer respect or peer-to-peer positive interactions. So those are some of the other activities that we've been doing to try and up that peer-to-peer interactions. And so that's one of the things we've done in PLCs, or our main focus of PLCs this year.
Excellent. Other questions coming? No?
This question is regarding the cultural community meals. It sounded like a great idea, and it probably works well, sets a theme, causes the kids to be excited about that. The question, who takes the lead in preparing the meals?
So the first one, it was very staff-heavy. The staff did that. The second one that we had, and the third one that's upcoming, is much more of a student focus. And so Ben Heath, who's coming from the Key, is an expert in student voice, and so he's been helping raise that student voice at the ALC of how they can get their voice heard in the planning process, the cooking process, what do they feel. So they have to do a little research to see what's important of this culture, like what are some of the important cultural dishes that could be represented. And so there's definite research involved, and then students get to plan that every step of the way. And we're just envisioning that just becomes more and more, that end of the spectrum as we go through the year, is that more and more of it will be, the students and staff will just be there to assist, but not really plan, just put that on the students. Yep.
Excellent. Other questions, comments? Excellent, well, thank you. Yes, absolutely. No, I was going to say that it must have been incredibly gratifying to see those attendance, that attendance for, for the first part of the school year, because it's something we know you've worked so hard, and you know, you just, it's always so wonderful for us to hear, hear your report, because it just reminds us of the outstanding staff you have, and how you really are able to serve such a unique and diverse group of students, and you do it so well, and, and they feel so welcome and supported, and it just, you know, that's the, that's the secret sauce. And so congratulations to you and to your whole staff, and we know it will just continue to, to be good things from, from here through the rest of the school year, so thank you.
Thank you.
With that, Dr. Hillman?
I just wanted to share a couple of things. One, you know, it's one thing to look at a graph and see the relationship pieces come through, but I had a chance, I visit the ALC monthly and meet with Darryl, and then we do our little hallway duty in between class periods. And as I'm leaving today, just this afternoon, I'm walking downstairs, and a young man's walking downstairs with me going to Fayette and the Longfellow Gym, and he asks me who I am and talk a little bit, and he said, I really, he's obviously new to the school, and he said, I really love this school, and it's because the people here want me to be successful. And I'm a little bit of paraphrasing, but the fact is that it's one thing to see it on a graph, it's one thing to hear it in a report, but when you hear it from the children's mouth, and you think of the risk factors that it takes, you know, to qualify for the ALC, we, I joke, I've been joking with Darryl about the increase in numbers, stop being so effective, right? Stop being so good. But it is really heartwarming, you know, to hear students who, there is no reason to say, but he felt compelled to say, I love this place, and it's because of the people. So that's pretty special. And it was a little rougher start to begin with, just because of the increase. But I also want to point out, I see Dr. Laura K. Allen here as well, and Darryl, and we had a group of people, Mary Grace Hansen, they got together probably the third week of school, because we had a burgeoning crisis on our hands in terms of a number of EL students who are here who we weren't quite prepared for. And you know, we're always balancing about making sure that we can support the students' needs in the short term with the long-term fiscal stewardship of the district. And so you were very gracious in giving us some additional FTE to help with the class sizes at the ALC. But at that meeting, the high school, ALC was represented, and we talked and brainstormed about how can we serve these students' needs. And you should be really proud of your administrators, because they came together and said, yep, we can cooperate in a way that we can provide the ALC additional FTE. It also gave the high school a little bit more FTE to address their increase in EL. And to do that, Bridgewater gave up an instructional coach, because they looked at the bigger picture across the district. We did some other work with some other administrators helping out at Bridgewater, but I think this is exactly what good stewardship looks like. We looked at what are the students' needs, and before saying, oh, we need somebody else, we looked at who did we have available, how, we knew that we weren't going to be perfect with it, but we could put people in the places where they could be successful, and that we could do it in a stewardly way. So I think this is a good example to the community about how we solve problems without necessarily just adding things, without thinking about how can we have efficiencies. And we're not going to say that, you know, all of the services are as good as they were before, but the ALC is really getting a benefit, the high school is getting a benefit, and we've thought creatively about how do we support teachers and students at a building level. So I just want the board to know the behind-the-scenes things that happen to make these kinds of things possible. Again, a lot of great cooperation between people, saying, what's good for all our kids, because we are one district, not just a collection of individual buildings. So I think that's a great story too. So thanks, Darryl, for your leadership and for doing what you're doing to really support kids every day.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on. The next report, we welcome Principal Greg Gellinow from Northfield Middle School with this update. Welcome, Greg.
Good evening. Tough act to follow. Thanks, Darryl. I don't have ropes courts and meals and things like that. Well, actually, we do have a meal to talk about, so we'll kind of compete that way. So thank you for inviting me here this evening to give an update. As I looked at kind of the template, how we're going to do this, I kind of had to narrow down a few things to get things to fit, so I'll throw some McDonald's stuff in as well. But I'm going to first just review kind of the, I have four goals for the middle school. The two achievement goals, the one on the left has to do with the MCAs and really working on our growth and increasing the number of students that have positive growth. And then the one on the right is really going after the, our achievement gap with our FRP Some things that are going well along those lines is, we just have really good systems in place at the middle school right now. It's taken a while, but it kind of bleeds into number two a little bit, that we have the right staff in the right places. We're doing a fabulous job of identifying needs of students and doing it quickly, and getting them into interventions, and supporting them both in class, outside of school, setting up tutors. Our student support staff is doing a terrific job, meeting with students that need that extra support and connecting with families. So those, the system itself is in place, really to work on those two goals. And the last one, again, it's early, but after one quarter right now, our students that are in interventions are doing, are doing well. They're, they're making growth. If you think about a student that you put, that needs access or that's supported in intervention, it's kind of stopping them from that downward slide and kind of leveling them off and start building that confidence and building those skills so they can start going up, and that is happening. Some areas along those two achievement goals that we do, I'll call them challenges, that we continue to work with on this continuous improvement model that we aspire for, is that our grade system has not only found the right students that need interventions and done it quickly this year, but we have a waiting list. We can only service so many students. Our MTSS classes, you can't have a class of 34. That kind of doesn't work for an intervention. You need to keep classes in that 10 to 12 range typically. We continue to work for that, and as students, we meet weekly as an MTSS team, and we say, are the students ready to move out? Have they kind of, we've given them the skills so we can move someone else in. A little early in the year, we haven't done that yet, but we have a couple that are on the watch list. There are new students to us that we didn't have all the data, but we, on the surface seemed like they needed it, but now they've kind of got their stride, and so they'll be soon leaving our intervention system, and so we can welcome some new students in. But the simple fact is that we have more students than what we can currently handle right now. The next one is, is that we're still seeing, and again, it's early, but we're still seeing that our English language learners are not growing quite at the same pace. They're working hard. I'll talk about a few things with the next ones that we're doing to kind of bring parents in to help support us and educate some families, our EL learning families. But they're, they're not where we want them to be. They're making growth, but not at the same rate as their non-EL students. And then the last one is, we do struggle with students not doing work outside of the school day. We can get them to work hard, we can give them the supports of tutoring and the interventions that we do have when they're The one on the left has to do with the parent satisfaction survey that went out, and is a pretty lofty goal. If I had my way, I would've went to five. Let's see what we can do to get to five, but I was talked out of that and say, let's make it a little more reasonable. So, we went to four, which is good. The one on the right is just a refresher. We did not do a percentage increase or anything, because we had kind of hit the home run on that one, so to speak, and the percentage was so high, we just want to try maintaining And then things that are going well with this, one of the things that, trying to move that parent satisfaction survey result, that one target, is that they want more positive messages from our staff. So, I made it a priority over the summer. I said, I'm going to take one of my two staff meetings a month, and we're going to dedicate that to just, we created postcards, and we still meet. And I give an update on walkthroughs and rounding conversations, but then staff brings their computers, and they just write messages to students and/or families to let them know just some really positive and good things happening. And some teachers are keeping track so they can hit everyone, but most of them are not. Most of them are just, hey, what happened this week or over the last couple of weeks? They write it, we mail them out, and the response we've gotten from families and from students has been terrific. The stories we get, not when we meet, we normally get a story or two at the staff meeting, and occasionally it's a little bit of a cry fest, because there's just, people just really are, get emotional about being stopped in the grocery store, being stopped downtown. There's been some EL families that through translators have said that it was just, it's up on their, they call their parents and extended family to let them know that their son or daughter got recognized. There's just so many great things that have come out of this, that now staff don't wait. I just keep a box, and we just keep filling the postcards. And I just kind of, it's outside my office, so I can keep track of it, and as it gets down, Amy Stowe, we just need to make some more postcards, and people are doing it nonstop. And I'm not sure if people were totally on board with it, and they weren't sure what the effect would be, but I can tell you that it's having a great effect across our building, for sure. The other thing we did, a couple of things we did, is we've made some changes. We made a change to our open house. One of the things that through surveys over the last couple of years, is families have said that they'd like some classes and be educated mainly on like Schoology and Skyword, technology in general, but also what other supports the middle school can offer their sons and daughters and them as parents. What can they do? And we've tried it a couple of different ways, but this year, we kind of attached it to open house, we changed the structure of open house, and I got some really good feedback from that, from our parents. Mixed, I mean, some people still liked the traditional of going through every hour. You have to have a little give and take, because we had to find a time. It's not a perfect system, but we were able to offer that to families, and more families than typically we have gotten, the other ways we've tried, did take advantage of those, and they appreciated them. The other thing is, we have created a parent advisory. We went from a site improvement team to a parent advisory. We've only had one meeting so far. It was a really good meeting. We went over the parent satisfaction survey, and we talked about a studer a little bit, and they appreciated that. And they're looking forward to the next pieces coming forward. And then, again, it's just another way to get good feedback for myself and middle school in general, so if we can make things even better, that's the whole goal. Some things that didn't make the slide here, and one thing in particular that I think is really starting to take hold, is something called Food For Thought. And our two EL teachers, Jenny Jones and Rebecca Haring, started this last year. And it's something that they invite our EL families in, they feed them some food, and then they offer a topic for their parents, for the parents to come in, that things that they, it may be on technology, it may be on, we did last year, we did a little bit of something on, actually on vaping, because that was a request that we had. And just different topics to get the families in, to help them feel both connected, but also help them to, how can they better support their own sons and daughters? This year, HCI partnered with us, and they actually supply the food. And we have some people that will manage childcare, so when, after they eat, they can have their younger children kind of be watched while we do a presentation. And we've done two so far. We've done the parent satisfaction survey and kind of explained what that meant, so they can be looking for that survey coming up in February. And then this last one we did, we did a technology one. And that was, that one was a really, oops, sorry. That one was a really good hit. Those families, we learned a lot, things that they didn't know. We got them signed up, so they got, they received my weekly messages, so that was a big deal. Now, next Thursday, our seventh grade science teachers, Amy Allen and Trina Meehan, are going to present to those families on how they can support their sons and daughters in seventh grade science. So, it's going to give them skills on what they can do to help just give their, those students support when they come home, and what they can be looking for when they come home. So, I think it's a terrific event that has started, and it's getting some traction. Again, it will help these climate goals as well. Some areas that, the top one's not really a problem or a challenge for us, just the survey on the transitions typically doesn't go out until second quarter, so that's something actually that just went out. So, I just don't have the results, so I don't know what I don't know yet. So, when those come back, we'll kind of see where that lands and where we would have to make some adjustments, or have we hit the mark? And the last one is just struggling to get families to attend our parent sessions at those events. Like I said, it was better this year, but in a school of nearly 1,000 or slightly over 1,000, there still was not many parents that still could take advantage, because it's hard. They want to go open house, they want to visit the teachers, but yet if we do it separately, we get even fewer parents to come to those events. So, it's really just keep, I'm, keep talking to parents on what will work best, what's the best way to go about doing this? Because still, one of the main pieces that I do get from families is, hey, I don't know how the technology works. How can I support my son or daughter? I don't know anything about Schoology, or Schoology, as they call it, or whatever. It's a, hey, talk about these things, and we try offering, and we're going to continue to try offering things, and hopefully we can just get more and more people to take advantage of them. And that is currently where we are at. So, I'll take any questions.
Excellent. Questions, comments? Come.
We have your, the enrollment numbers, and in sixth grade, you started out at 330 and then dropped down to 307, 308, and it stayed that way. Is that typical? And is there a reason, or is it just the big transition into sixth grade and parents have?
Yeah. The 330, at the start of the year, I'm not sure, to be honest, where that number came from. That seems a little high for sixth grade. I don't know how accurate, but some of that is that it could've been, I'm not sure when you got that number, it could've been a projection. I'm not positive, but we did have some students that chose not to come. St. Dominic's went full-time, not that they were with us for sixth grade, but sometimes they do, they plan on coming over, because they're, when do they want to transition? They may have changed their mind. There's a variety of reasons for that.
Other questions, comments? Rob?
I guess the thing, the thing that stood out for me in the presentation that concerns me the most is this issue of the waiting list, and I understand the need to keep the class sizes small, because you can't have the impact that you want if the class sizes are too big. But what can be done, what is done with the students? I mean, they're going to continue to fall behind if they don't get some sort of interventions, or is there something that goes on outside of these classes that can help them?
Terrific question. So, here's what, here is what, some pieces that we do put in place. There are tutors, we access Carlton as well as St. Olive tutors during the day, so we try setting those students up with tutors when we can. We also have some parents that have volunteered now. Seems like more this year than previous years that come in and also help tutor students. In addition to that, our after-school program or Middle School Youth Center has kind of done a, revisited how they want to structure things, and the structure they have in place, students really have been working hard on some academics there. So, now we're trying to funnel people that way as well. Our student support, our two guidance counselors and social worker, they keep in contact with parents, and they really, they do regular check-ins with those students, and they talk about grades, and they talk about organization. What do you have to, what missing work do you have? So, there's things that happen behind the scene. It's not as direct as like if you have a Rose or Brett Routh to do MTSS direct intervention pieces, but it's at least a start, and it's something we can work on. And then there's always just the classroom teachers that do, they do their thing, because they're just really good at what they do, is they also try supporting and give the extra check-ins, as well as, you know, more time, one-on-one. During study halls, they may say, hey, come down. I was just in a class the other day, and a student came from a study hall, hey, can I make up a, make up a lab? Yes, come back, give me about 15 minutes, get the class going, you can come back. So, teachers are doing, going even, even more than an extra mile to support those students, knowing that eventually, we're hoping that we can give them this, even that extra boost. But yeah, it's not, we don't do business as usual, it's just not where I would like to see them, or any of us would like to see them be.
Thanks.
Excellent. Other questions, comments? Ellen?
So, I had given Greg a heads-up of my questions. So, the two I had related to the bullet about continuing to struggle with students not working in academics outside of school. And so I was curious about two things. One, if you could talk a little bit about what attendance has been like, because Hope had sort of teed up that at the high school, and whether that's a concern. And then the second, with working outside of school, of thinking about if we have weather-related school closures and what the plans are.
Sure. I'll talk the weather-related one first. The weather-related piece, something that we did find out last year, as much as we'd like to say that's an unusual year, and we hope it is, we'd like to plan for the worst and then hope for the best. So, one of the things that we found out at the middle school is our students weren't very well-prepared to be successful on an e-learning day, especially multiple ones. So, we literally just had a staff meeting last week where that was the topic. And what we did is, we got together, both department-wise, so seventh grade English together, eighth grade English together, and so forth, to talk about, okay, what are we going to expect our students to do on e-learning days? And then more importantly, I asked that they, one, put it in writing, so students and parents will have that information. But two, we're picking on that Monday and Tuesday, right before Thanksgiving, and every single class, all day, they will teach their class on what is expected of them during an e-learning day, or what should happen for them to be successful on an e-learning day. It won't take the whole period, but they, I wanted them to show them, here's where you go to get your information, here's how you access me as a teacher, because I'm available if you have questions, so that they have that piece. The question always does come up of, okay, what if students don't have internet access? Well, ironically, we had an interesting tidbit that happened, where the middle school, we didn't have any internet for a day. And so we take maybe not the greatest thing, and we'll turn it into a positive. So, we got to practice. Okay, what happens if you don't have internet service? Well, the interesting part is talking to both Brett Routh and Rose Turnercliff doing MTSS. One of their students was, not a problem having me in Miss Turnercliff's class, I have a hotspot, we can all work. So, but they caused him to have a conversation about that. So, there are some students who typically, they don't have family Wi-Fi access, but most of them have cell phones, and most of them do have unlimited data, and so they have hotspots, so they can access that, so they had a discussion about that. Here's something you can do, you can help yourself by doing this. So, they had those discussions. But ultimately, for at least those students that don't, truly don't have access, it's really about those supports that I just talked about, is really, we have to support them when they come back. And it will help this year, where we were pretty much thinking everything was going to be graded, we kind of had that mindset. This year will be a little bit different, where we have a little bit shift, paradigm shift with that, which will also be helpful. So, we're expecting things to go much smoother, and I think the middle school got hit pretty hard last year, and I think that'll be much better this year. Hopefully that answers that piece here, okay? The next one on attendance trends. That's been a concern over the last few years, is our attendance in general. So, I pulled some numbers, thank you for the heads-up, so I could do that, is that we already have 15 students that have missed 10 or more days. And if you think of the ASSE or Every Student Succeeds Act allows 17, I believe it is, for the year, we already have 15 at 10 or more. And if I would drop that to eight, that number would go up a lot. And that's a lot of absences, and nothing can beat students being there. So, we look at that, what's going on. There's four of them that we have some pretty serious mental health issues or concerns with, and we're working with the families and outside resources. There's 11 of them that we already have connected to other resources in the building to try getting connected in another way to get them to come to school. It could be anxiety. Fernbrook, who's now at the middle school, kind of, we had a slow start last year, because we didn't have someone consistently, but now, starting off the school year, she's already maxed. She has 21 students she's already seeing, and she has a waiting list. So, there's, there's a lot of things going on, some of which we can support the best we can. We're trying to work with outside agencies, but that is a number that has, over the last three years, been something that has increased more and more. The county, I can also tell you, there's two of them. There's a process called SARB, and I'm sorry I don't know the acronym for that, but it's really Rice County offers, and we had one student kind of ready to go through that process, and there's another one that has been in that process now. And they meet with the county people, as well as school, and the family, and the student, and they kind of come up with a game plan and try figuring out what's going on, and really try motivating the student to, hey, here's kind of where you're at, and here's what, as a county, we can do and we will do if attendance doesn't improve, and they help with resources. And this one student, it's a slow process, but slowly starting to get back in the swing of coming to school. So, nothing's a quick fix with a lot of these attendance issues. I will say an anecdotal comment to that is, I also have seen, over the last several years, more and more families taking trips and just kind of taking, taking students out now and then. And there's nothing wrong with that, that most of those are legit, but it seems to be increasing the number of students in general in this school.
Other questions or comments? Thank you. This was a really excellent report, and I just think it was, it's just really great to hear where the, where the middle school is at and how it will be moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
For the presentation. Okay. We'll move on to our next item, which is non, discussion, which is non-substantive policy changes. Dr. Hulman?
This is everyone's favorite topic behind the audit, right? So, our policy committee has been working diligently over the last year to establish a process for looking at every policy in the district at least every four years. So, we have a schedule, we take a look at all the policies, and most of the time, we look through it, and we've got several policy committees. Rob Hardy is on the policy committee, Noel and Ellen. We have some student representation, and we will bring in people who may be necessary for specific policies. As we go through, we're reviewing them, making sure that they're up to date, making sure that we're, there's a handful of just, you know, things when a policy was written in the mid-'90s that need to be updated in terms of word choice, we're working through those. But something that does happen, and it seems this year there might be a few more than normal, is something when the Minnesota School Boards Association puts forward something called non-substantive policy changes. So, when the legislature does its work, sometimes a statute may when a policy was written in the mid-'90s that need to be updated in terms of word choice. We're working through those. But something that does happen, and it seems this year there might be a few more than normal, is something when the Minnesota School Boards Association puts forward something called non-substantive policy changes. So when the legislature does its work, sometimes a statute may have a renumbering. There are times where a new court case might support an MSBA model policy that they want to just add it to the footnotes or the reference. So there's no change to the actual policy itself. There is simply some changes to the footnotes. And we are all about creating systems and processes. So the policy committee talked about how can we create a, a process where this could be more automated so we always have the most up-to-date policies with the most up-to-date references on the website. So I'm not asking you to vote on this tonight, but what I am suggesting is that when the Minnesota School Boards Association publishes its non-substantive policy change list, that as long as it only changes to the footnotes, that you empower the superintendent's office just simply to update the document on the website. We would certainly add that non-substantive change made on this date by superintendent's office to have the paper trail, but what we don't want to do is spend valuable time in the policy committee going through these non-substantive changes. And so this is the process that I'm suggesting to you. I think that when we're simply just updating, you know, what paragraph of what policy it is, it probably doesn't require the policy committee's full attention nor your approval. So I just wanted to share that. It's the process that I'm suggesting to you. I would ask you at the next meeting to, you know, formally vote on that, to authorize that so that we can have that recorded, that when we do update those policies, that you've given us authority to do so. So that's a pretty basic approach, but it seems to make sense to us.
Excellent. Okay. Questions, comments board members have on the proposal? Seems to make a lot of sense. So we will visit that as an item for individual action at our next board meeting. Item, next item for discussion is start time for school board meetings. Dr. Hulman, you and I were going to present.
Yes.
A discussion on that.
So what you'll, every so often, we talk about the start time of our school board meetings. And you know what? The January organizational meeting, we set the schedule for the year. We set the location for the meetings and we set the time. Now, of course, you can change those as needed as long as you give the prior notice. We rarely do change a board meeting because we want to be predictable, right? We want the public to know, oh, yep. It's usually the second or fourth Monday. It's seven o'clock. There's a board meeting. This is one of those unique exceptions because of Veterans Day falling yesterday for us to move this to this evening. But we've also had from time to time where people have talked about, is seven o'clock still the right time? And when we look within the city, you know, we know that there are other examples of the city council meeting earlier, but we also know that there are some boards and commissions that still meet at seven o'clock. So we looked around the big nine to see how are we comparatively? And we have that data in your packet in terms of when other school boards start their agenda. And you might ask, well, why would you even consider it? Well, you know, we typically try to keep a two-hour meeting or less, but we do have some meaty topics. And there are some from time to time where we go beyond that, especially when we're talking about budgets and things like that. And there's been some board members who've suggested, just thinking that we may be fresher for those discussions if we're ending a board meeting at around nine instead of near 10. Of course, it takes special board action to take any actions at a meeting after 10 o'clock. We have a policy that suggests that. So as you look at the backup that we provided for, you'll see in the big nine, and we actually learned that Rochester, since the data collection premiere, we've also learned that Rochester now starts at 5:30 as well. So you'll see Albert Lee at five o'clock, Austin, Faribault, Mankato, Red Wing and Rochester at 5:30, Winona at six. And then you'll see that when we look at the other surrounding area board meetings in terms of Cannon Falls and Farmington, New Prague, Tri-City United, they all start at six. There are a few, Kenyon-Wanomingo, Lakeville and Randolph that still start at seven. But every so often, I think it's a good thing to discuss what the start time does. We, we've had some discussions over the years about, does the start time help encourage people to run for the school board or does it hinder them from running the school board? And I think there's probably as many different answers to that as there are people. We're not asking you to vote on this tonight, but we're just bringing this to you so that you have an opportunity to think about it because the, the time to do it would be in January when we do the organizational meeting for the year to set the time and obviously the days. So Julie, do you want to share too?
No, I think that's a great overview. And so wondering if board members want to offer any, any of their comments on, on this topic?
Ellen? So I'm curious if we're thinking also about the structure, like, so I was trying to sort of get a better sense, like looking at all the, you provided this information. So, you know, looking at the minutes and sort of how they schedule their meetings. And one of the things that I noticed was like Faribault only has a regular school board meeting once a month and then they have their boardwork sessions once a month at 5:45. So are we thinking, I mean, is that, if we're thinking part of it is we have these meeting meetings and making sure we're fresh, is there, are we looking also at, is it the way our structure of our meetings are? Are we thinking some of these other strategies are what we're considering? So getting a little bit better handle on is it, what, what, what are we, what's our outcome that we're trying to achieve? So we think about, is it, is the time or, you know, what, what is it that we're hoping that we're trying to solve?
Well, I think that, those are, that's a great question. And I think we, we envision the structure of our board meetings staying the same. And we have sort of found that, you know, the work sessions, we just review as, or we, we look at work sessions as we need to based on issues that come forward and the need for us to, to have those more single, or those meetings where we can just delve into a single issue. I think in terms of really reviewing the start time is, I think when we looked at what some other districts were doing, I think we see that, that we are meeting a little bit later than most districts. And if that's something that, that we need to look at in terms of just for our own, you know, is that the, the best time for us to be doing the work that we're doing? And so in terms of, of really seeing a structural change to our meeting, I don't, it's a great question, but I don't really see that. I think, one thing I, I do note, actually, thank you to Amy for doing some of the research she did on, on length of board meetings that other districts have. And I think one thing that's interesting and one thing I appreciate the most about our board is that we do have good discussion and we do like to ask a lot of questions. And so thinking about the, the length of our meetings and going into past the nine o'clock hour and is, if that's something we really want to look to have meetings going that late in the evening in terms of our, of our own freshness and maybe other community members that want to stay for some of those important discussions that we have later in the evening. So I think part of it is just a function of the way our board works in terms of, we have, you know, we have pretty meaty agendas. And one thing, again, I think is a testament to us as, as a board, is the length of discussion, discussion that we have. And thanks to Amy, we found that we probably are typically having some longer board meetings as compared to some other districts. And I think that's just, you know, the number of issues that we take up, but then also the degree to which we delve into the issues when we're here and the, and the amount of questions that we have. And then I think to the, the testament to our presenters who really are so knowledgeable and give us quite lengthy responses to, to questions that we have. So it was just thinking overall about the length of our meetings and then I think to some, maybe some wisdom around, because we haven't really looked at it for so long, if that's something we should, we should take a look at. Again, we're not, we're not, there's no agenda here in terms of saying we want to do this. It was just really looking ahead to the organizational meeting, saying, should we look at the start time? Because we know we have seen where, where we are later than other districts. And then our city council meeting at 6:00 PM too. So, you know, maybe just modeling, you know, as, as just meetings in general and the community starting at 6:00 PM, if that's, you know, a good practice. So. Jeff?
At the risk of being captain obvious here, I mean, it looks like the trend would be 5:30 or 6 o'clock, which there's nothing on the time slot of, of 6:30. I'm certainly not opposed to an earlier start. I also, it's a matter of, if the trend is starting earlier, I'd also like to respect the time of the, the staff and the administrators and like to get a little bit of feedback of, you know, what their thought is on starting at 5:30 or 6 o'clock or as far as how that works into their day. And we don't get, obviously, a big turnout most of the time for the public, but I mean, to have something, you know, 6 o'clock, 5:30, 6 o'clock. So I'm, I'm just wondering where that would come into play. But I'd like to hear some comments of, you know, because you're having to stay, you're working a full day and then you got something at seven. You know, what would an earlier start affect, you know, your typical things so you can get home, get your rest or, you know, run some other errands you need to do. So.
Well, I think for our presenters, the people who are here on an as-needed basis, I think that they would all be thrilled with being here a little bit earlier, right? So that they can start their presentation earlier and as you said, get home a little bit earlier. I don't have children that I'm putting to bed. Val does. And I know that we've talked about strategically placing the time. It would be good for us on one end and it would get better for Val as time goes on. I think Aaron has that same issue. I think we all would, would say that starting a little bit earlier would be a positive thing for us being closer to our, our traditional workday. But we serve at the pleasure of the board. We will show up when you tell us to. And so that is the bottom line. We will, we'll, we will do it whenever the, the board meeting starts and we will continue to give that effort. I do think that there is some, for our, for our presenters and for the people who come to the meeting, I do think that there is some good things to have it a little bit closer to the, to the end of the traditional workday, though I'm not sure any of us really know what the traditional workday is necessarily anymore. But I think starting early would be, would be overall positive for most of us in, in that way. And it would be different, I think, over time. I do want to point out something about the work session. I, I, I enjoy board meetings, so I like to look at things like that. And we actually probably have part of a work session as nearly every meeting. In Northfield, our work sessions typically have been focused on one topic, so we can really dive into it. In some other districts, you will see work sessions that might have two or three different topics. And some of the presentations that you routinely see about updates, those are typically, in some cases, part of work sessions. One of the things that we really appreciated about having two business meetings a month is the wheels of the district continue to turn. As you look at every time, we have increase, decrease, change in position. We have appointments. We have resignations. And so for the district office to have had the approval of the board on those things just allows those procedures to be done twice a month versus having it all chunked once a month. And so that would be the caution in our district. I think that our district office people really appreciate the board taking employment action twice a month so that we can keep that employment process running because there are certain things we just won't do until the board has approved them. And so for the business of the district, I feel fairly confident in saying, as I look at Val, that the twice-a-month approvals are a positive thing. And so we do a little bit of work session like some other districts do with reports like we had tonight. And then when we do a work session, it's typically, we're going to talk about this one item for two hours. And I think we've had some very productive work sessions over the years. And in fact, later in the meeting, I'm going to suggest that we have one coming up in about a month here.
Excellent. Other questions, comments?
I believe from my experience, we've had school board meetings starting at eight o'clock, seven o'clock, five o'clock. And when I, considering running for the board way back when, I believe the meetings were, were at eight o'clock. And that was fine, but when they, they decided that they would be earlier, much earlier, I had to get time off from my boss to be able to make here for a meeting. And for a commuter then, be it on the board or be it in the audience, it would be an impact. Furthermore, I, I think it would, starting early would cut into family time. I think there's some family times, family meals that are really, really important. They were in my family. And so I, I think if it would be set at a time that should be family time, that might impact the impression that we are giving to what's important for families. And I don't want to be a part of I believe there are many moving parts to make this work. And I'm looking forward to hearing what the community would have to say about it as well as the staff and the Not sure it's one that we should make lightly. That's my thoughts.
Excellent. Thank you. Great comments. No. Rob?
First of all, I appreciate Noel, Noel's comments. I mean, I, for me, that dinner hour of, you know, till about 6:30, it's good for me to be home because I'm doing all the cooking and everything. So, but I'm just wondering, but I'd be fine with what the, the majority of people think, but I'm wondering if this would be something that if we made a change, it would be instituted at the organizational meeting or whether we do it before then?
The plan, if we were to make a change, it would be part of the organizational meeting. And so then it would be taken effect in January of 2020. That's one of the, to establish that, part of that. Amy?
So I've been thinking about this. And as Julie mentioned, I did some quick and dirty research on the big nine start time just to get a sense of how they could start at that time. Basically, my research was to see when they ended. And as I went through this process to make broad generalizations, I, I just grabbed five end times from fairly recent board meetings all for each, for each school. And what I found is the groups that were starting at five or 5:30 generally seemed to have, I mean, a time of like an hour-long board meeting. Sometimes it was shorter, sometimes it was longer, but the length of board meetings overall was shorter than what we have in Northfield, speaking very generally. So, and sometimes the meetings were really short, like 13 minutes or eight minutes, you know? So, and so what I learned from this process is that every board has a different culture and different expectations. So if we look at the other board meeting times and say, well, gee, you know, six of the nine has all started at 5:30, we should too. We're making a decision for the wrong reasons. We have to make a decision based on what's right for our group. And even looking at those times doesn't make any sense at all to me because we have to look at our community. We have to look at our staff. We have to look at all of us. We have to think of the public who's coming and try to figure out the time that would work best for everyone. I think there's a couple of questions that come up, whether I agree with Noel was saying about family time. You know, I think a lot of people try to have dinner together, but then there's also the idea that people want to put their kids to bed. So there's family time that could happen after the meetings. To me, another question is, when do people eat in general? You know, if we're starting at 5:30 or even six and people have to get home from work and then get here, are we going to be all ravenous by the time the meeting starts and, and not have the energy to get through it? Or are we all going to have a potluck dinner at five o'clock so we can have immediate? I, I don't know. I mean, there, there are answers to all of this. If we start earlier, does that mean we will have less motivation to end in two hours? Will, will we still be ending at the same time? Because we love to talk. We all know that and we have Matt here.
You know me too well.
So, so that, that would be another question too. So as I pondered all of this, I, you know, I realized, for me personally, I like the family time and the dinner and, and all of that. And, but as I pondered it further, it was, I am very flexible with my schedule and I have no problem starting at whatever time we think is best for all of us. And if that means giving up dinner with my husband twice a month, that's okay with me because this is an important role that I play as well. And I can certainly eat at home at 4:30 or 5:00 or whatever, so I can get here in a timely fashion. So I think Noel brought up, the most important questions were, was how do, how do we keep the timing such that we can be most responsive to the community and, and also for getting additional, new board members someday so they could feel like, that they could work it into their schedule?
Great. Thanks for commenting. Other questions, comments?
I guess for, for me, it's, oh, sorry. I guess for me, the, at the end of the workday, it sometimes I guess for me, the, at the end of the workday, sometimes I'm hoping to leave at 5:00 and something comes up, and so there's, oftentimes, it's hard to break away, and like Noel said about commuting or having to take time off to come here. So maybe 5:30 wouldn't work so well. I would, my kids are older now, but I could imagine if, when they were younger and Dad not being there, or Mom or Dad not being there for the meal, would be a teaching moment in that they're out serving the community, and that's, you know, and that's an important thing, that that's why they're not there. So put a positive spin on that. I usually don't eat before the meetings anyway, so that doesn't affect me. And we do often go late, and by the time I get home, I'm pretty much wiped out, and then I sit and watch TV for a while and try to go to sleep. So a little bit earlier start would be my, would work in my favor, so.
Other questions? Ellen?
So I think everybody, I didn't want to come back to.
Oh, yes.
So I guess echoing what I guess Noel and Tom are saying, from my perspective, I could, I personally would just, you know, I could make whatever work that the board needed to work. I think if working a more traditional schedule, it's 5:30 would be tough. And so I guess my concern would be less about me because, you know, I'm here, I'm invested, but more about what we might not have for future board members at 5:30. I think that would be tough, and it would be tough for community members, I think, potentially to be able to make it to a public comment that was right at the beginning, and then looking, like Amy did, looking, it seems like everybody has their public comment at the beginning, so I don't know what other communities have adjusted. You know, as Amy said, all communities are different. So I think that would be tough. I think, but I could make it work, but I think, just thinking about who we want to, what representativeness we want on the board and what way that would rule in or rule out. But as Dr. Hillman said, you know, it could be the other way, that more, you know, we could get a different mix of people because we went within earlier time. But I just think that 5:30 might be, make it more difficult, or so.
Other questions, comments?
So really, to sort of recap, and I think Ellen, you teed it up really well in terms of why we were having this discussion, and I think it's just overall, as a board, us reviewing how effective we are and, you know, how we choose to make decisions and our process, and part of that is when we meet. And a huge important part of that, as Noel really articulated well, is how are we serving the community with our work? And we're serving our community in many ways by when we meet and the access our community has to hearing our discussion, attending our meetings, you know, providing great public input or public comment, which gives us great insight into the community's perspective of our work. So I think that we don't envision the structure of our board meetings in itself changing, but then looking at really the start time is just a means to look at how effective we are as a board. And when we look at that, some of the things we know are important is our community's access to our meetings and the length and the quality of our discussions. So we know that we have lengthy meetings, and the access, we know we want administrators and the staff, support staff, how we can support them in being here and doing their best work for us at a time when they've all put in a long day's work. So really, those are sort of the parameters around trying to make this decision, and I think if we feel like we're doing the things that we want to do and we're doing them effectively and we're serving our community with our work, and the 7:00 is really a good time for us to do that, then I think we choose to stay with that. If we feel like adjusting the time affects some of those factors, then I think we would need to make, you know, we would need to have a discussion about adjusting the start time. And I think, Amy, I appreciate her comment around, you know, we aren't necessarily concerned about what other communities do because we are really wanting to serve our community, but just seeing that they have found times that have worked for their community is just really a way to benchmark our work against the way we do other work that we do as a district, is how we're benchmarking our work against other districts. And so that was really to serve that discussion piece as well. So I appreciate everyone weighing in on this. I think we're all kind of thinking about this. It kind of honestly sort of rocks our world a little bit because it's like, well, wait a minute, we always meet at 7:00. So I think it's good that we're having a discussion around, does it make more sense for some of the reasons that you articulated to adjust the time? So I think the discussion was good. I think we can come back to it at our next meeting, and then we would just decide, do we want to have that in place for our January meeting? I think it's something we should probably decide prior to the January meeting so that we're prepared to make that change into the New Year. So, well, if everyone gives it some thought, again, I appreciate the great comments, and then we'll revisit it at our next meeting and make a decision as to how we want to move forward in January. Okay? Great. Thank you for the good discussion. All right. So our next item for discussion we did have in the table file, so if you want to look for that, it was required to hire an additional general education EA at Bridgewater. It was a memorandum that was in the table file. So if everyone wants to pull that out, Dr. Hillman, if you'd like to present that additional discussion item.
I'm going to ask Val MurdaStar to share the information and walk you through it.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Thanks, Val.
Yep. So annually, we are required to complete the Title I comparability report, so that is something that Mary Grace Hansen and I complete each year. And this year, they changed the report. So basically, the report is to look at our student-to-staff ratio of basically general fund-supported dollars versus federal and other funding sources on a per-student basis, so that the Title I schools, Greenville and Bridgewater are both Title I schools this year, are similar to our non-Title I school, which is simply. So that has historically been the case. This year, they've changed it, so they're now comparing the two Title I schools to each other as well as to the non-Title I schools. So both of the Title I schools compare, are in compliance with the non-Title I school, but Bridgewater has a slightly higher, there's a percentage you have to meet. So Bridgewater is just slightly above that ratio, and so to be in compliance, we would need to add about a six-hour-a-day general education EA. That's the most cost-effective way to become in compliance with the report. They really just look at basically direct instructional staff or instructional EAs as part of that calculation. So that's the maximum estimate for the cost would be just shy of $30,000. It would be obviously a position to end at the, end of the school year, and knowing the changes in the report, we would obviously incorporate some of that analysis into our staffing projections in this room. So if you have any questions, I would welcome them.
Questions, comments? Ellen?
So I'm wondering, since this is an annual thing that's happened, and is there a way that we can, the timing of it, is it always going to hit us at the middle of the year? I know I'm less concerned about our ability as a board to react and more about hiring and that sort of thing.
So the report is always due November 30th annually. That's how it's always been, and I'm not sure, I guess, where that date comes from. We just follow what MDE tells us to do. But we know the calculation that we have to go through because it's, again, they changed it this year, but now that we have that, we can make sure that we're kind of doing the back-of-the-math good math to make sure we're going to be in compliance moving forward. And part of it is, you know, last year, Bridgewater didn't qualify as Title I, and now they do again, but it's really just because their enrollment is higher, so much higher than Greenville's right now, and so their ratio is slightly skewed. Yep.
Other questions or comments?
So I have a question. So then the approval of this would just be for the 2019-20 school year?
Correct.
Okay. So then my other question, since we're looking at this being a compliance issue, oh, I know the other question. So the maximum cost of $29,945, I'm assuming that would include benefits?
Yep. That would assume the person hired would take max benefits, which it obviously could come in less than that, depending on what they opted for.
Sure. And then that amount would be supported by the additional Title I funding or would come out of the general fund?
It would be the general fund, because the calculation requires us to exclude all of the other funding sources. So this is basically general fund support per student between the schools. The Title I is supplemental.
Okay. So then when you have to submit the report, did you say by November?
By November 30th, yes.
So we, would it then, in that report, you would obviously submit that this additional position has been added, then so is it, and because it's a compliance issue, would it be helpful if the board was incapable to adding this to an item for individual action in the same meeting?
It would be helpful. We can certainly make it work either way, but it would certainly help expedite the process.
And, you know, we typically try not to bring things about money to you and ask you to do it in the same meeting. So what our plan was, was to present this to you tonight, we planned to post an anticipated opening so that we could get the people to apply and be ready to go, so that if you were to approve it on November 25th, we could have executed it right away and get the report done by the 30th. But if it is something that the board is comfortable with, moving to individual action, I think that that would expedite the process and for all the reasons that Ellen mentioned as well, so that we can have the greatest chance to secure the person and get them working right away.
Ellen?
So I guess I would agree that with it being a compliance issue, it doesn't seem like waiting, you know, makes much sense, and I really appreciate Val walking us through all of the pieces. So I guess I would move that we have the request to hire an additional six-hours-a-day general ed, educational assistant at Bridgewater, be moved to an item for individual action.
Okay. So we have a motion to move this item. Second by Rob. Any questions or comments?
Motion?
Yeah, we need a, we're just doing a motion to move it to an item for individual action, so we're making an agenda change by moving it. So Ellen's motion is to move it to an item for individual action, and then when we get to that portion of the agenda, we will have a motion to approve it. So is there, then, there's a motion and a second to move this item to an item for individual action? Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We will move that to an item for individual action when we get to that portion of the agenda. So the next item on our agenda.
Can I just ask one question about the issue? I was just wondering if we hire one educational assistant, do they go to one classroom? Do they get split among all the classrooms? How do you balance that out within the school?
So Principal Nancy Antoine will assign the person to the work that they will do. There are several things that they could do. They could push into a class to be able to support students. You could see it at kindergarten, you could see it in first grade, supporting additional reading groups, things like that. We could see some enrichment pieces where we're working to enrich, because this is general fund money, because the Title I is supporting the students who qualify for Title I. So there's a great amount of flexibility on the general education side. So it could range from the person having part of their day in one classroom for an hour or so a day, they may be working with enrichment groups, students who are actually ahead of grade level, because it is general fund that we have the opportunity to do that. It could be additional behavioral support. It really is open in a number of different ways. It would really focus on instruction, and the intention would be to support those things that I have just shared, but we don't have the official schedule as of yet. We just know what the kinds of activities would be. And what I could, what you heard, it's a little bit serendipitous, because what you heard is that Bridgewater gave up their instructional coach, right, to go help over at the Area Learning Center, and there were, while our instructional coaches don't always directly work with students, there were some student groups that she did work with that we've had to fill in the gaps, and Hope Langston has helped us with that, and some other administrators helping. So this would be an opportunity to help backfill some of that that Bridgewater gave up so that the Area Learning Center could have a full-time English learners teacher.
Thank you.
And what they're hired for could change, could change twice before the end of the year, even more than that.
Okay. So we will then, we'll move on now and add that item to, item for individual action. So next on the agenda, we have approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were a few personnel items and another item that was added to the table file. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Noel. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on now to items for individual action. Our first is the American Education Week proclamation, which we are always very happy to support, and it's so well-written. I would like to read the American Education Week proclamation. The official week is November 18th through the 22nd of 2019. It's the 98th Annual Observation of American Education Week. The NEA, our Northfield Education Association Teachers Union, did sponsor a educators, retired educators lunch, held on October 30th, which was a great event. And I'll go off-script here and thank Anita, Ozzy, and Erin Bailey, and many, many others who helped make that such a wonderful event for our retired educators. So as part of the American Education Week, there is a proclamation, which I would like to read, and we will officially approve as an item for individual action. So, "American Education Week proclamation. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality; and whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future. And whereas education employees, be they custodians or teachers, bus drivers or educational assistants, office employees or administrators, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas schools are community linchpins, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in a common enterprise. Now therefore, the Northfield Public School Board of Education does hereby proclaim November 18th through November 22nd, 2019, as the 98th Annual Observation of American Education Week." So is there a motion to approve this proclamation as presented? Moved by Tom. Is there a second? Second by Rob. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So we will now move on to our second item for individual action, which we had moved from item to discussion. So is there a motion to hire in a six-hour-per-day general educational assistant at Bridgewater Elementary School for the 2019-20 school year at a cost not to exceed $29,945? Moved by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Ellen. Is there any discussion or questions? Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Then we will move on now to items for information. An expanded enrollment and enrollment options report was included in our packets. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, we got so excited the last time that the enrollment options report was done, ahead of when it normally is, that we included it in the board packet and forgetting that we had another more condensed report to share with you. So thanks to Director of Finance Val MurdaStar for, really what she does is she just condenses all the schools that have one or two or just a few students where they are attending, so that you're really seeing the largest districts where we receive people from in terms of open enrollment and how they go out. So it's just really... So it's just really, the information isn't any different, it is just formatted in a different way. So we wanted to make sure that you had that as well. No changes from the last time.
Excellent. Questions or comments?
Thank you. Yes, it's really fun to see. I always like to see, you know, just the trends, and so we really appreciate you pulling this report together and seeing it done so succinctly and really just good recap of particularly the trend. I have one question about Randolph. Are Northfield FFA students are not counted? They are Northfield High School students?
Correct. They are Northfield High School students who we do a tuition, there's a tuition bill that we get from Randolph for the classes that they take there.
Okay. So those students from Northfield who are enrolled, they are enrolled full-time at Randolph? Correct, yeah.
Say that one more time.
So that that number of 72 does not include our FFA students?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions or comments on the enrollment report?
I did want to make one, just comment about the question about the middle school number at the beginning of the year. One of the things that we struggle with is often when people tell us they're going to come and then decide not to come, we don't learn that until the first week of school sometimes, which is why we always, you'll see in September, we capture the numbers at the end of the first week, and a couple of times, then as we move on, we only capture it once a month. And there are years where we, as you've seen, we've had years where we've had a lot of people show up who we had no idea were coming, and then once in a while, we'll see a dip in that as well. And so I wish that they would all come in nice, neat little packages across all the different grade levels where we could use that at, but unfortunately, from time to time, we'll have people who will commit to us, we schedule them, and then when you take attendance the first week, they don't show up. I think this year just happens to be an anomaly with that.
Excellent. Well, and I think it's always the one question that I think many of us, as board members out and about in the community, is asking about open enrollment. We see it as a topic of some interest in some of the metro school districts right now. So I think that those who are watching, that kind of news wonder how that translates to the Northfield School District. And so I think it's always really good to be able to remind community members that we are, we are at a deficit of net in and net out, so, you know, it's number factors.
And I think it's also, it's important to look that it wasn't all that long ago where we were having a net out of 550, you know, almost 550, and this year we are at one of our lower three net outs in the last decade at negative 373. And so that's an improvement over four of the net last year, so we certainly have gone in the right direction and have evened that out a little bit more. And we, of course, know our enrollment options piece is that we support and are the authorizer for our charter schools. So a lot of places, it's like this with the charter schools, we welcome that, that's, we certainly are their authorizer and support their work, so we know that that's a big part of our net out.
Our next item for information is construction update number 16.
Yes, and so you'll, yeah, you'll see, one thing that just happened today that we didn't get to put on it, because it just actually started today, is I watched them backcoing concrete out of the back of Sibley Elementary today. And so again, want to thank all of our principals, and right now we're thanking Scott Sanus, because he is out in record cold, diligently helping parents understand the new traffic pattern, because if you drive by Sibley, you'll see that the construction fence does take up a pretty good portion of that back parking lot. So again, can't compliment Knutson enough. Knutson came in, had a great meeting with Scott and our custodial crew, saying, "How can we change the traffic patterns to put up with this temporary inconvenience that's going to yield this really wonderful new space?" Scott is out there every day, he's telling you that the morning is not as tough as the afternoon, the afternoon pickup, change of that process is a little more difficult, but just knowing how Scott runs those kinds of things, we'll have it figured out by the end of the week. So thanks to Scott for doing that, and again, they, some people had asked about how cold it was, could they still excavate? And they actually been using ground blankets to try to keep the ground warm enough. So again, Knutson has a plan and they're executing it, and it was, I got some good pictures of them excavating that sidewalk out of the back of Sibley. So we'll also talk about a tour at Bridgewater a little bit later. Last week, they poured 306 yards of concrete at Greenville Park in the foundation, so that's moving right along.
Okay, excellent. Other questions on construction updates? It's pretty exciting, I mean, when you think it's just, boy, a year and one week, and we are breaking ground on our third project. That is crazy. And the elements, they were one of the, in the loop, update from Knutson on the website, which was so interesting, is when they had to pour the concrete for the foundation, they had to put blankets over the foundations to keep the concrete warm. I mean, just the obstacles that the weather has presented for them, and I think they would say they're more or less on schedule at this point, which is really amazing. Noel?
Little piece of technology here. Concrete is exothermic. Means it gives off heat as it tears. So the blankets are there now to keep the cold out, but to keep the heat from dissipating, to encourage the heat to stay in.
Interesting.
Well, and there's, if you look at our social media page today, we have a great picture that Kelly Johnson, a third-grade teacher at Sibley took, because when the big equipment shows up, the kids get to the window, and they're like, you know, and so she actually wrote a note to her parents, saying, you know, "I know that some people might think this construction is going to be a distraction, but really it has provided us an opportunity to talk about careers in construction. It's got an opportunity to talk about, well, what are they doing and why are they doing it that way?" And so we asked permission, you know, from her to use that message she sent to her parents and a couple of photos with our social media channels, so that we could explain that, yes, there is some temporary inconvenience that we have and some excitement, and we're trying to leverage all of that, because this is something that does not obviously happen every day. It hasn't happened here in a while, so I'm really proud of how our staff has really embraced all of it, the good, bad, and the not-so-good, you know, the rest of the not-so-good. So it's, that's a good example of how we're trying to learn those things and teaching third graders about some of those same things, Noel.
Because it's exothermic, it is.
Yeah, it's exothermic. We'll make sure that's not on their next spelling test.
Put that into the third grade vocabulary.
That's also a Companeros class.
Put that into the third grade vocabulary.
Well, and we could have them translate it into Spanish for Companeros. That would be interesting.
Well, and you may, well, just segue into the Bridgewater Elementary School as part of the construction update.
Yes, so we just want to let people know that I did get to give the first set of tours at the Bridgewater Elementary during their parent-teacher conferences a week ago on Monday, and people are thrilled, some really, it's a very nice addition, it's not fancy, but we'll get to show off the balance of being welcoming and secure. So we want to make sure that we give the community who generously supported these projects an opportunity to come in and see it. So on the morning of November 23rd, Principal Nancy Antoine and myself will provide tours for any interested parties in the community to come and see that new addition, and we'll run that from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. So you're welcome to come.
Excellent.
And maybe Sam could help us getting that out, so people know that they can show up.
Our last item for information is the late-school start update. Dr. Hulman?
Yes, so I just want to provide you an update as to where we're at in this process. And basically where we're at right now is I am out doing a tour of schools, having informational and feedback sessions with our faculty and staff. And so so far, we've been at Bridgewater, we have been at the middle school, we've been at Greenville Park, we've had one meeting at the high school because of the size of the high school staff. We are going to have a couple of meetings at the high school, we have another one coming up, I think it's actually tomorrow morning, but we're going to have another feedback meeting. These feedback meetings are pretty condensed, right, because they're either at the beginning of the school day or at the end of the school day. So shockingly, I'm giving a very brief overview at the beginning of them of why we're trying to make the change, a general overview of the draft of how it could change, and then I'm asking people three questions to get into small groups and then provide feedback. What are the benefits that they see of such a change? What are the problems that they see we need to be solving in order to try to do this kind of change, and what other questions might they have that don't fit into either of those two categories? So so far, the, all of the feedback is in a pretty narrow, tight window. So what I'm excited about with that is that I think we are getting what the challenges are and what the dilemmas are. There are problems that, there are problems that are identified that we cannot solve. So you're gonna, when you consider this, you're going to have a dilemma that says, here's the benefit, here is one of the potential disruptions that we may not be able to fix. And we're talking about systems change, we're talking about how when one part of a system changes, that others will, can sometimes naturally follow, and that they adjust to meet the need of the new change. So we're getting some really good feedback, and that feedback is within generally a pretty tight window of, here are the things that we're seeing as issues, and they're not going to shock you. There are things that we've talked about before. So we'll continue to get that feedback from our staff, and then what we'll also do is we have two parent meetings coming up. We announced that to parents in a Skylark message last week. It's going out on social media, I'm not sure if it went out today or going out tomorrow. Just we've got two sessions where I'm going to run the parent sessions exactly the same way. And so we have a little bit more time there, we can carve out 90 minutes, which we just don't have the ability to do before or after school, but we're, of course, telling people, please continue to share feedback with us as you think about it, and make sure that you let us know, we want to generate all of the things that people see as a benefit, all of the concerns well ahead of time, so that when you have a chance to really weigh it, that you are doing so with the most information that you can. The other thing that we know is that even all the things we might try to think about ahead of time, I can guarantee you, if we were to make a change, the moment that we say we're going to make a change, there's going to be another wave of things that come up, and then when you implement the change, like we're seeing in some other school districts, there's another wave of things that come up. So just because we try to address all the things that we can think of right now, there are things that will come up that we can't think of, and we, of course, will respond to those, if that's the rule of the board, to move in that direction. But I just want to be really transparent that my concept of having a fully detailed technical plan for you was, is not really exactly how it's going to, you know, go, we're going to give you the best planning that we have at the time, we're going to give you all the feedback that we have, and then allow you to make that call, you know, one way or the other, probably I'm anticipating sometime in late January, we'll have a work, we're suggesting a work session in December to really dive into that detail. We'll have had enough time for people to have given us feedback by then, and, you know, we're looking at that at December 16th at 5:00 PM. Benjamin Buss will be here. Val and I met with Benjamin Buss a couple of weeks ago now. They, we had some initial discussions with them about concept of, hey, if we did this strategy, would you believe it'll be, you know, cost neutral? And now they're, the only way for them to truly tell is they're actually creating bus routes for a hypothetical schedule to say, if this is the time that you ring the bell and then start class at this time, here's when the student at the corner of Superior and Harbor would get picked up. So they're doing that level of detail, because what John and Jenna have told us is that they can give us some concepts, but until they actually run the numbers and run, you know, capacity and all those kinds of things, they really can't give us a firm answer. So we want to have that, obviously, well in advance of you making any decision. So this is just, again, laying out what we're doing. We're trying to go, as I tell people, we're probably about half-baked right now, and we're trying to get that feedback during the process. And I've also told people, it's very possible that we may come out and do some similar meetings in early January after your work session, you know, after the chance to really kind of narrow and get into what would the start times look like, what would the end times look like, and work from there. So that's where we're at. It's actually really awesome, because we have had some things where people have said, well, if we were to really think about a change like this, could we maybe think about a number of other changes that simultaneously to either a high school schedule, a middle school schedule, you know, thinking about how we promote and other things that we know also can impact student mental health? So I think that the discussion is not only prompting what are the concerns, but it's also prim, well, oh, well, if we did that, could we do this, this, and this? And while we may not be able to do all this, this, and this, we will have some good discussions about it that might even take us further down the road that we want, in terms of just thinking about what is the right 21st century schedule for kids. So that's where we're at, and I appreciate the chance just to give you a brief update.
Excellent. Questions, comments on the update? So one thing Dr. Hulman just mentioned was a potential for a board work session on Monday, December 16th at 5:00 PM. Would, not knowing if board members are ready to have their personal calendars in front of them and the opportunity to check them, Anita, would it be possible then, maybe to email the board tomorrow and just have, at that point, everyone have an opportunity to look at their schedules to see if that, that would work? But we sort of have a placeholder on that with the hopes that that will work for most board members. We found that Monday meeting as one that typically works, so we're hoping that is the case as well. I had one question also. So if the parents aren't able to attend and/or other community members, the feedback sessions, is there other ways for them to weigh in with their comments?
Yeah, so after we conduct those two sessions, we'll, of course, offer a similar comment form, if you will, a survey form for people to be able to complete, should they not be able to attend one of those meetings. And we often will give people who attended the meetings the link, because sometimes you get home and you think, oh, I should have said that. So we'll offer that opportunity for people to share that via survey form after those two public meetings for our families. And then at some point, we will probably also do the same thing for our staff. Once we get a little bit narrower on what the timeframe, actually, there's some feedback from the staff that we could collect more easily through a survey tool than a face-to-face discussion.
So that survey, then, would that go out on Skylark then?
Yep. What we would probably do is we will, we have found that the most direct way to get it to people is Skylark, because people get that, you know, via their email, we can translate it very effectively, so that we can make sure that those people who speak Spanish are able to get it in their native language, which we've had a lot of positive feedback on. And then we would also most likely post it on, we usually post those on the website too.
Excellent. Well, thank you for all the work you're doing and on this important issue. So there will be a lot of information for us to digest and to delve into as part of the work session. So if we are able to come to consensus on that Monday, December 16th work session, and if not, we'll have to look at alternative dates. Again, no decision is going to be made until early 2020, so we do have some time, but we are laying the groundwork for making that decision, and the work session will be a really important next step.
One more item here, too. I've also learned at the Big Nine Superintense Meeting last week, I learned that we're not the only ones having this discussion. And in fact, I think, right now, at least half of the Big Nine schools are having the same discussion. So in talking with Superintents from Rochester, it sounds like Rochester is going to be considering this actually fairly soon. They've got two potential options that they're looking at. Mankato is looking to potentially do this in conjunction with some other transportation changes that they're looking at. Austin is looking at doing this as well. Owatonna is just beginning the process, and they believe the discussions would lead up to the opening of their new high school, which was passed a couple of weeks ago for '23, '24. So those schools are the ones that are looking at it at this point, and of course, we know Winona is already there. So we know that we have at least half of the Big Nine schools are either there or who are looking to possibly do this at the same time that we're discussing it.
Excellent. That's a great update. Okay. So that, I believe, yes, is our last item for information. So we will talk about future meetings, Monday, December 25th, and Monday, December 9th.
Monday, 25th, there are a couple of questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Monday, November 25th, sorry, and Monday, December 9th of 2019 at 7:00 PM in the Northfield High School Media Center takes care of our last meetings for the 2019 year. And then into 2020, our first meeting is Monday, January 13th, 2020, and as we've indicated, we will begin with our organizational board meeting, followed by the regular board meeting. All of those meetings take place at Northfield High School Media Center. So with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn, moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Ellen. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.